Jeez. Come over to our house, we haven't done anything here.
I haven't started either.
Well, the special meeting of the Committee of the Whole Finance for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, please come to order. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Heinz?
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Urecheck?
Here.
First item on the agenda is draft legislation. We have the first resolution requesting advanced payments, money. It sounds like the order?
Yeah, this is an annual resolution and it's definitely to the city's benefit to request these advanced payments. We get eight installments in the first eight months of the year, so it moves the cash flow up.
Okay.
That did have a due date. I think we could go.
Can we pass it Tuesday night if there's an emergency?
Yes, that'll cover it.
To the next meeting? Okay. And what's that number?
That'll be Resolution 24-16.
16?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosberg, would you?
Yes, sir.
Take that? And probably the next one, yours as well?
I'll let Mike take that one.
The ordinance of $530,000?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Each year, we budget for purchase power. It's the single largest item in any of our budgets. And throughout the year, we're constantly comparing our budget to what our actuals are, typically wait as late in the year as possible to see if we're going to need a supplement. And this year, we will. Our amended budget is $20,638,400. And based on our recent analysis and our best guesstimate as to what the bill will receive this month is going to be, that puts us over on the expenditure side by roughly $450,000. I've bumped our request up to 530, just in case that bill comes in a little higher. And again, if it isn't higher, the money just goes back into the Election Department Fund.
Any time constraint on this?
Well, we'd want to approve it before the end of the month. Our final bill will come mid-month and be due at the end of December.
Okay, very good. Mr. Stugmeyer, would you like to take that? Any questions from council members?
That'll be 24-182.
182?
Correct.
Do suspend and call that time? Do you want to do that Tuesday? Move that to second? Okay.
Let's put it on second. And again, Mr. Rosberg, put that on second. Next one's, let's see. That's, we briefly touched that a couple of weeks ago. It's about the city treasurer. Any comments on anything? You know, you can either pass the legislation, you can amend it, you know. Now's the time to talk.
Well, I still have kind of an issue with cutting it. I mean, some of the information we were given since the last meeting, it's going to be, I mean, if you go back to the year 2000, it's almost cut in half from what it was in the year 2000. And so it appears that initially, a lot of the information we were given supports the pay scale where it's at right now. So just, I, right now, I have an issue cutting it back to us or something like that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I personally think that ordinance needs to be tabled. The fact that our treasurer has tenured her resignation and the information that I saw, I can't imagine us trying to determine what that position is being paid without having a job description.
I would probably need a legal opinion because it's an elected office. You know, and it's setting a pay for an elected official. And we don't have, you know, anybody here to represent our HR department.
Did Lisa, I believe she provided the responsibilities?
She did.
That's pretty much.
Would it be appropriate to read some of that so that it's part of the public record?
We can have her letter put as part of the public record.
Do what?
We can have her letter as part of the public record.
Okay, I request that we do that.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
The hours that she works equals out to about $16 an hour if we change it to $12,000. And that's unacceptable, especially the responsibility that she's supposed to have and does have. So I'm very much not in favor of the current amendment.
So we can amend this ordinance? And I'm not sure because our HR director isn't here tonight, you know, what the drop date is when the Board of Elections needs to have this. Because they're early filing, I believe the date is second Tuesday of February, when that position needs to file for office. So I know there's time constraint. So if you want to table this to Tuesday, I think that'd probably be best.
And I also have a question about the, some of the language in the ordinance. It says to correct the compensation schedule. Don't we just mean we want to adjust it or change it? We're not really correcting it.
You can amend it to whatever you want it to read.
So should I make a motion for that?
Well, we're going to table this till Tuesday. So if you want to have something prepared for Tuesday?
But we're not talking about the deputy city treasurer. We're talking.
Wait, I asked that last time.
That's a different, that's two different positions.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, this doesn't even, the treasurer's position that everyone's discussing doesn't even apply to this ordinance.
I think the intent is that it's the treasurer. I asked that last time.
It said right in there, the deputy.
I asked that last time. I said, why are we, why are we talking about the treasurer when it says deputy? Should it not just say the treasurer, the city treasurer?
We'll get those questions answered from our HR director. And we'll have our president next to.
Yeah, I asked that last time. It's in the minutes.
For a regular meeting. But we'll table this for tonight. Actually, we'll just remove it from the agenda.
It's very confusing.
For my request. All right, let's go into the legislation. First ordinance, 24-181, which is the budget. And we'll discuss that in a little bit. We have that a little bit further down. Let's go through the other ones and we'll come back to that one. Ordinance 24-178, Mr. Rosberg.
I'm going to move that on to third.
Actually, I think they need that passed tonight. If we could suspend and call, they have a time constraint with the county.
I'll suspend and call.
So.
No problem.
Any objection from? Next one, 24-179, Mr. Urecheck.
Mr. Hiscok, was that the one that we said you needed passed? We would go on reading?
Yes, that could be.
Yeah, I'll suspend the call.
Okay. The next one, 24-180. Ms. Hanlon, you had that last time?
Move to third?
Yes, this can move to third.
And the next one on third reading, Mr. Stugmeyer?
Yeah, we'll call that this evening.
Okay.
Has that one been corrected? It just shows for 2025 and it cannot go into effect in 2025.
Let me take a look at that. I thought it was corrected, yeah.
Move it to fourth.
Assistant Law Director, is that something we can amend on the floor?
I believe you can.
So we'll need some language to remove.
2025 year.
The year 2025.
The chart does not represent.
No. I don't think there's any issue. Well, let's just move this to fourth reading.
Okay, move it to fourth and we can do it.
Okay, we'll take care of it Tuesday.
As long as it doesn't change.
Okay, so that's the end of the legislation. Let's go back to ordinance number 24-181. You open for presentation and then, of course, council members.
Mr. Williams and members of council, good evening. I just want to make sure you're okay with, so at our last meeting, I was directed to work through some of the questions that I had received electronically from at least two members of council in terms of some of their budget concerns. We began that discussion, working through some of the concerns mentioned by Mr. Copley. We actually only talked about one particular item, got through that item. That would be the Brickyard Athletic Complex proposal in the 25 budget. I think we talked about it, but I don't believe we ended with any real discussion or consensus on where to go. And that's really, as we address any of the budget items tonight, what I would ask council to think about is if you're ready to, to give the administration some clear and concise directions as to what to do as we move forward with the budgets at this point in time. And I'd ask, you know, I know we're up against a little bit of a timeline, if we really make a concerted effort tonight to get to some decisions tonight before we leave this room, I think it would be very beneficial for the process, if you will. So with that, I took the initiative based upon some of our discussions during the last council meeting in regards to the Brickyard, to put together a handout, which I provided to you. It is, on the top of that handout, it has a project number, which we have signed to the Brickyard. That's 24408 and Brickyard Athletic Complex. And basically, what I did in the top part of that document is our existing 25 budget proposal, which is currently still in the budget. And then I tried to surmise for the group the two proposals, which I at least verbalized at our last meeting. I wanted to put it in to some document that you could actually look at. I won't rehash some of the advocacy points I brought up at the last meeting, but I will talk about the two different proposals, if you will, just in terms of what you have in front of you. So alternate one, which I would believe is, what I would characterize as the middle-ground proposal from moving off of the $12 million proposal, would result in an $8.1 million budget proposal, which is comprised of $5.6 million in utility-related work for the Brickyard area. That would be essentially, as I sit here today, comprised of the issuance of enterprise debt and then 2.5 million in grants. That 2.5 million is the one-time Ohio Strategic Funds, which the city has already taken control of. We've received those dollars from the state. And the proposal in substance, if you will, would basically allow us to design and begin the construction. I think we all realize that. We won't have completed construction on any of these proposals in '25. But the proposal would design and begin the construction of all the utility phases of work that might be needed out there. Rather than having four full fields, we would reduce that request down to two fields to start. We would not build concession buildings and those kinds of things, but we would still include a restroom and a storage building. We would also do our best to incorporate with whatever 8.1 million would get us, as much parking area as possible and certainly the entry-drive layouts that we talked about. In addition, the proposal would include doing the work for the passive recreation area enhancements, which again, as I mentioned last time, would include two trailheads with parking areas, restroom facilities at both of those trailheads, an entire cleanup of the passive park area, if you will, and then a more structured establishment of the hiking trails within that property. That would be alternate one proposal. Mr. Stugmeyer?
Just a quick question on the, in the alternate one, in, you know, the alternate proposals there, 2.5 million in grant, the extra $900,000 isn't in there because what that's designated for isn't covered under these two alternates? Or why isn't that in there?
Essentially, the extra 800,000 to 900,000 is a donation that we expect, but that donation by terms, as we understand it today, would only come after we constructed something. So it would be a reimbursement, if you will.
Okay, so that's why it's only in the first?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Reimbursement after that?
Okay.
That would be one of the steps that I would tell you would be an advantage of alternate number one proposal. We would get 800,000 to 900,000 in reimbursement once it was completed.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions, I'll move to alternate number three's proposal. Essentially, that is the proposal that I mentioned previously, which would include the design and construction of the passive recreation areas, as I previously mentioned, but also begin the design of the athletic complex and facilities. Again, I think in response to a question by Ms. Hanlon at our last meeting, we estimate on most projects that design and engineering costs amount to about 15% of full construction costs. So 2.5 million won't get us to both a passive area design and construction, as well as a full design of the complex on the athletic side, but it will get us started in the direction of having both schematic design and some cost estimate designing going on for the athletic complex and facility side. I think the utility side of the equation would cost much more and probably in excess of the total that I'm proposing for you now to consider. So those would be the original proposal, as it currently exists in the budget, and the two alternate proposals for the Brickyard Athletic Complex. A couple of items I would mention still. We are still actively engaged with our friends from Brownfield Restoration Group to apply next, or in January, I should say, for a Brownfield Restoration Grant. We won't know definitively whether we get that grant for some time. It wouldn't be till the middle of '25 until we understand those dollars. But I do mention that so you know that and have that for your knowledge. But again, I would mention a couple of different items. You know, the council invested in this property to the tune of 1.95 million back in 2023. And I think we heard in meetings in 2023 from the public on the need for fields and ball fields, things like the removal of the Steiner Fields were mentioned by our folks in the public. We had folks come in from Wadsworth Youth Baseball and Softball, as well as representatives of travel ball, talk about how, at their estimate, about 1,000 children play in those leagues every year. They broke it down to households in Wadsworth in '23, so they opined that 1 in 10 households in Wadsworth has a baseball or softball player, which would benefit from this particular facility. And then they also mentioned that at that time in '23, they had had some concerns where some of the teams locally would have to play in other communities because of the unavailability of fields during that season. So these are all points, if you will, to identify that the constituents, the folks we serve, have identified a need for these ball fields to be constructed. I would lastly tell you that some of the other projects that we have planned in existing city parks can't really move forward, that includes the ODNR funding portions of those projects, until we construct ball fields at this facility. The reason being, many of those improvements to existing city parks that are planned for the future won't happen without the removal of some of the ball fields. So we need alternatives to those ball field removals to do that. I think that's all I wanted to talk about in regard to the Brickyard. I'm open to any discussion and answering any questions that I can at this point.
Have we, since last week, have we made any headway in the access points? Are they going to be on the north side or the south side?
As I reported, Mr. Morris is still working on reaching a memo of understanding with St. Ed's. The information has not changed in which I relayed last week.
Okay, thank you.
Council members?
I'm not in favor of alternate three by any means. I think, of course, you know, originally we decided to keep all the park projects going, which was a goal. We wanted to do the whole thing. At least in alternate one, you get all the utilities and everything else in there and can make some decent headway on that. But I'm not in favor of just the, basically, restrooms and parking lot at this point.
I'm not in favor of either one of the alternates because we don't have it designed yet. We don't know where the access point's going to be. I mean, there's just too many variables to spend that kind of money and put the citizens in debt for that type of project until we have a firm, solid plan of what we're going to do.
Okay, Councilmember Hanlon, any comments?
Yeah, I'm also not in favor of number three. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we'll never have a plan unless we budget money to do it. So, and I'm also, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're not, if we put this in the budget, we're not just saying, go ahead, spend whatever you want, however you want. Everything that would get spent would come to us after a plan is devised, and we could stop things at any point. Is that the correct process?
I think you're headed down the right direction. In terms of your first question, we need to engage a professional to design any of these projects. And in order to do that, you have to authorize some level of spending to get there, to get started on a design. That design, Mr. Copley, to address one of your thoughts and concerns, you know, we have confirmation from St. Ed's that they will provide us with an access point to 94. We didn't have that even just a month ago, but we do have that. It's been a long process to get to that point in time. The question is whether we have it at the access point that currently exists, which we all call the old road, if you will, or if it's south of their current facility and then wraps around. But both of those concepts essentially assure to us that we'll have access out to 94, which is a good step. We already have access to Seville Road, so that would provide us the two access points that we were looking for ideally. But a designer needs to place all of the amenities within a design plan in order for us to understand that. I would envision that we would follow somewhat of an interactive process, even with this design, that we would have an opportunity, both for council to weigh in on the design, certainly the administration weighing in on design. I would like to have the public weigh in on some of the design, certainly folks from leagues to be involved to look at that. But it takes a designer to do those steps and to get us there. Even in that schematic, early design phase, we need that help and assistance, and that starts with authorization in the budget. Now, moving forward to your second question is, even if you were to authorize some level of budgetary expense, we don't, we can't spend those dollars in that significant of amount, like selecting a design firm and those types of things, entering into a contract, I should say, with that design firm, because they will more than likely be in excess of the costs in which we can't make decisions on. We need to come to you for your authorization. So you still have controls and steps in the process that we would come to you to do. We would be able to initiate the processes moving forward, like selecting folks and doing those things. We just wouldn't be able to contract with those individuals.
At what point would the debt actually be incurred?
So I'm looking down the desk here to Ms. Fix. I think that's a common question that we both have, and we need to have a better understanding. The debt issuance, we want to be timely in those issuance of not only debt for this project, but for many of the other projects that we might need. Ideally, it would be most efficient to wrap that into, the limited number of issuances, primarily one, if we could do it, but a limited number. That debt issuance, we need to understand schedules and projects. We need to be past the design stage in order to do that. We need to get some things in place to do that. One of the things that we're able to do is engage a design professional to help us make those decisions, help us get clear confirmation of contract administration and those duties. And we do that through the budget appropriation. So that budget appropriation is needed to sort of bridge the gap before we get to construction costs in which debt issuances would be relied upon.
And that's exactly what I proposed last Tuesday, was to go, to put the money in the budget for the design of the project. Then we can get more concrete cost of exactly what it's going to be before we start issuing debt. But without a design, you don't have a concrete cost. These are all estimates, just like I said last week. I mean, it hasn't changed anything in a week.
But if we have a design done in March, April, May, or whatever, we wouldn't be able to do anything with only the design in the budget until the following year.
But we can do a supplemental appropriation, like we did for the splash pad and everything else, out of Memorial. It's the exact same type of process. We had a design that Matt bought to us in January or February, okay? We appropriated the money. It wasn't in the budget. We appropriated the money, and we moved forward with the project. And that's what I'm asking for here. So we know how much debt's going to be issued, when it has to be issued. There's too many unanswered questions here for a $12 million project.
Ms. Hanlon, you had something to say?
Well, I guess I'd like to either have Ms. Fix or Mr. Hiscok tell me about the difference between, you know, let's say, alternative number one and what Mr. Copley is asking. You know, in the actual process and the actual commitment of public money to debt, you know, public debt, I don't see, I'm not really seeing the difference.
So what's in the budget? We would be transferring $3 million in cash from the general fund to use for that project
That's alternative one. What about alternative?
No, that's the original proposal.
That's the current proposal.
So that, alternative one pulls out that $3 million transfer.
Right.
So it doesn't really affect the debt in the general fund?
Okay.
It, we will still issue 5.6 million in debt for the utility work.
Right. And then what about what we're calling alternative number one, where you don't take $3 million out of the general fund?
Alternative, well, the cash stays.
It says number one on here.
The cash stays in the general fund. So it increases the, the cash stays in the general fund, basically.
So as far as the actual process, like, you know, approving and actually giving permission to spend money, I guess I don't see the difference between just saying, okay, we have 8.1 million, you know, approved versus, let's do this piecemeal.
And we would come to you with legislation for the debt also?
Right.
You would be approving that? So you would be aware of the plan? Okay, here's the capital, here's the debt, here's the cash that we're going to use. So depending on the timing of the issuance of the debt, which, like Mr. Hiscok said, it's most cost-effective to do one, that timing has to be worked out, but you would be informed and part of the process, however you choose to do it.
Okay, I'm going to ask it a different way.
Okay.
Is there a benefit, is there any disadvantage to approaching it the way Mr. Copley's suggesting? Is there a disadvantage to actually getting the project done?
There's no disadvantage. I think what would hap, the difference between the current proposal and the budget and alternative one, notwithstanding the difference in 12 million to 8.1 million.
Right.
But there is no cash being used out of the general fund. So the alternative addresses two points that we have heard as city administration. We're concerned about the amount of the project in general and some of the unknowns, and we're also concerned with the drawdown of cash in the general fund because of the nature of what's happening in the general fund. So alternative one removes, as Ms. Fix said, and as we strategically are trying to propose to you, removes that 3 million of cash usage in the general fund. What is apples to oranges, so to speak, is we will still need to use cash to hire a designer to get us to a point where it is. We won't issue debt for that kind of cost. But what we would do in alternative one, if you feel that that's the right direction to go, is we would use some portion of the 2.5 million grant dollars for the design. The issue becomes, too, something that we deal with from a regulatory standpoint is, rightly so, Ms. Fix and the finance group has made a concerted effort for us to know before we engage in purchase orders or before we engage in contractual, we want to make sure that we have the dollars available for those projects before step one moves forward. So I would tell you that the one benefit to budgeting, whether it be 12 million as the current proposal or 8.1, is we have an idea as to what we're doing and where the funding's coming from at step one. It's not to say that you can't move dynamically through a process and make process and make decisions and get authority to do those things. I'm just saying, from a budgetary planning standpoint, this is the way we can forecast best. This is the way we can take things into consideration best.
So Mr. Copley, are you, are you in favor of alternative three?
No.
So you don't like any?
I don't like.
Okay, then I'll quit asking.
I figured you said we'll go ahead and do the plan, and then once you see the plan, go ahead and do a special appropriations throughout the year.
Oh, oh, yes, I can only hear one person, please. Yes, that's what I'm saying. Give
us a plan, and then tell us what it's going to cost us to initiate that plan, and then we'll make those decisions of how we're going to move forward.
And I think your question was, is what's the advantage or disadvantage of doing that throughout the year or just going ahead and putting, even if it's the 8.1 million in, and then not necessarily approving it along the way?
Right, and I don't know how we'll pay for the plan if we don't do any of these.
Matt just said he'd take it out of the 2.5 million dollars.
But you've got to, we've got to appropriate those dollars in order to do that.
Correct.
So we just appropriate the money into 2025 budget as of right now for the planning phase of the Brickyard. No construction. Then we'll have the highway or the access points determined by then, hopefully, and have a hard plan so that we can move forward properly.
Let's hear from other members. Councilmember. Rosberg.
I'm in a conundrum right now because, you know, I'd like to see a plan. I really would. I think appropriating $12 million right now without a plan is a lot, but I understand we have the control for it. I just cannot, I'm siding with the idea. I'd like to really see a good plan for this property, and is it the right plan? And we don't even have a design team yet, correct?
That's right.
Because I know we did have some preliminary designs with another company a while back, but, you know, we're talking ball fields, we're talking turf field, baseball, football. What are we doing? Are we putting back, you know, we don't have a design? We have no idea what we're, we're really doing there. And that, I have no problem with providing money to get a design, but I do struggle with some of the others, with, until we have some of the design. That's just my input.
So I have a question, and it was in the past, and I believe this is probably true. But, you know, you talk about design professionals. Going back two years ago, when they were talking about putting a parks master plan together and committee of the whole, of public ways, we tried to input. So we had some say on who that design firm was, and we were denied. Is that something that you would entertain the thought of? Because that one didn't turn out very well, as we all know. So it's something, we're going to be a process of also the design team hiring?
So traditionally, that is a management responsibility and duty, but I think we've shown a level of collaborative approaches to things. I think certainly there would be no issue with talking about the steps in the process that are needed in order to select the design firm, or really, the first firm, I don't necessarily want to call it a design firm, to help us lay out that design, if you will. I think part of that process of selection does not normally include council until you're authorizing payment of the selected entity. Perhaps that's what has happened in the past, but this is a large investment for community and constituents that you will all answer for, including the administration and everyone here. So we want to include everyone. I think that's an easy lift for us to do. We'd be happy to do that. Ultimately, the revised code gives you the standards on selecting the entity. So while we may want input and we may have concerns, there's really a process that we have to follow to select that firm. Mr. Parrish, councilman Parrish.
Yes, my issue is I look at priorities, and I think always infrastructure and safety forces are more important, are more important, and I think we need to hash out the money for the rest of the budget before we commit money to this park, because that can wait. We can pick any of the three designs after, or others, alternatives, after we decide how much money we've spent in other places. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this till 10, I mean, to December 10th today, until the end of the budget process. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
To do what?
Postpone any.
Till the rest of the budget is done, so I know how much money's left over.
Postpone the Brickyard conversation.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council?
Yeah, I guess I would like to talk before someone, before we vote on a motion. So I think it's pretty obvious to see that we're not going to solve this one. I would like to go through, at least this evening, the rest of the items, because I believe this exact item that we're talking about is going to come up on multiple points you're going to discuss this evening. So let's continue through it. I think we all kind of understand what our options are on the park, and let's see how the rest of the conversation shakes out tonight.
Okay.
It's going to be the same.
So we have to take action. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of Mr. Parrish's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
Opposed, aye.
Motion denied. Well, actually, let's do a roll call.
Aye.
Hanlon?
No.
Parrish?
Yes.
Sugmire?
No.
Rosbert?
Yes.
Williams, your check?
No.
Three, three.
Three, three. I got to break the tie. I'm opposed to the notion. Let's continue on with the rest of the budget discussion, and you can reenter that if you like, Mr. Parrish. So using the same format that we talked about at the last meeting, I'll work through some of the information that Mr. Copley has proposed for discussion. The next item was the downtown infrastructure project, and I will surmise the concern that basically we need to reevaluate the proposed funding and potentially reduce it or end or eliminate any reference in the project to a streetscape plan or redesign. So I will just make a couple of general comments. Again, I had a handout for you for discussion purposes this evening. It is entitled Downtown Infrastructure Project. I'm not going to read through all of the items on that document, but essentially, you know, I think, talking with several members of council at different times, there's a realization that there are some real concerns with the existing underground infrastructure in our downtown. That's water, sewer, stormwater, electric communications, as well as signalization infrastructure in the downtown area. The proposed project for '25 does not include any shovels in the ground. I'll say that again. There is no proposed shovels in the ground in '25 for the project. But it's the beginning of the vitally important part of the downtown infrastructure project, and it is the planning and design and engineering phase that we need to get going on that. So the project would not only include replacement of existing and aging underground infrastructure, but it would also look at rehabilitation abilities of any of the utilities. As many of you know, there's, some of the utilities are over 100 years old in that particular section of our downtown. So the replacement of those items, in particular, the water line, is a high priority, not only due to the age, but it's a critical line and a transmission feed line, if you will, for the water services. There's also concerns about lead water services in the downtown area. We all know that we're in the process of EPA lead removal, processing on water lines, something that we have a mandate to do and a deadline to do, as well as the ability to not only feed for adequate fire flow in the downtown area, but concerns with high side and low side water resources. So it's in need. There are, known to the city, many sewer infrastructure-related concerns, things that might include fractures and other structural deficiencies within the existing lines downtown. We all know that the wastewater treatment plant's new NPDES permit requires us to address SSO removals. The downtown infrastructure is one of the primary offenders when it comes to INI SSO issues, and correcting those problems will help us not only address SSO issues, but it'll make for safer and cleaner water services throughout the city. Obviously, I think we then move to some of the strategic implementation of being proactive rather than reactive when you have issues with the utility infrastructure. I think we've talked on a couple of different occasions about our concern, our collective concern with the impacts to businesses during this construction phase, and we all agree that it'll be a challenge, but I think those challenges can be discussed through the construction process phase, if you will, and in good planning, we might be able to do our best to avoid as many impacts as possible. There will be impacts. We understand those. I think a more important factor to consider in that regard is that if we do nothing, there will certainly be impacts if we have a failure in utilities downtown. So the businesses will suffer. We will all suffer for not taking action when we had an opportunity to take. It is not something that we can continue to kick the can down the road for. I think it only makes sense for us to discuss streetscape enhancements when we're digging up the street, digging up some of the sidewalk infrastructure, digging up the four legs of our downtown. It's a time to improve. I think our current streetscape structure might have been 1982-ish in terms of some of its currents, and I think we can all take a walk downtown and realize that there's some things that need improved and that. But I think we want to enter into a collaborative process that has steps in it, which is a further part of my document, which you will all be a part of. Property owners downtown will be a part of. Business owners downtown will be a part of. City administration will be a part of. Our utility infrastructure folks will be a part of, and certainly the public will be a part of. So we are proposing that as part of this design process, we get started with a public charrette, if you will, and that will enhance our ability to get input on identifying what are priorities, not only to council, but priorities to business owners, property owners, city administration, and utility users, as well as the utilities themselves, what we need to do down there. That collaborative process is something that we need to get going on to identify before we even hand off to a design team, if you will. But I'll be humble and tell you, I can't do that. I don't have the knowledge or expertise to do that. I need to hire someone to help us with that public charrette process, and usually, that's a designer of some sort, or some planner, or landscape architect, or someone with an acumen to tell us, when we sit in this room and have public discussion about what we need and what we don't need, what is a priority and what isn't a priority, they can use their expertise to tell us, "Well, here's what we did on this project that addressed this similar concern. Here's an alternative that we might want to weigh." What is the, a group collaboratively think about these two items? You know, there's a whole bunch of different processes that we can enter into to define those priorities and understand what direction we're going. None of this concept or idea will change the structure of the buildings or the facades downtown. We're not changing the facades downtown. I'll say it one last time. We're not going to touch private property whatsoever. But if we're digging up utilities, if we're destroying surface-level amenities, we need to have a plan to replace those amenities, and a plan that hopefully includes an economic development benefit to the business owners and property owners downtown, that provides enhancements for all of us to come downtown, provides folks from out of Wadsworth to come to downtown as a destination point. It's truly an exciting opportunity that we are committed to propose a dynamic process that includes all of us in it, to really get to where we need to be. But I don't have the expertise to do that. Humbly, I would say Mr. Testa does not, and Mr. Belloc does not either. We just don't have that ability, and we need help in coming to that design conclusion. And there's a process that's well-established in these types of projects to do that. On the back of your handout, I gave you a little bit of a diagram. It's a public realm-type diagram that talks about the charrette process and how it works for public projects like this. We don't have to follow every step, but it's a good outline as to those steps. The same as we've discussed in the Brickyard project, throughout the steps in this process, I think we would be open to your input on what designer is selected. However, there is a process in the revised codes that guides us on that selection process. I think also, before we spend any dollars on design or engineering services, all of those things have to go through the legislative branch, you all, for authorization, before I can sign any contract to enter into. So I think there are certain things that I've heard, I think, and I'm going to jump upon some of the items that I think Mr. Parrish mentioned in his notes to me about concerns with the downtown project. But we're not asking for a study. This is not a study. This is really bringing the community together, all of us, to figure out priorities, and then making recommendations and priorities from that process and handing it off to a design firm that we select to show us what it could be. There is a schematic phase in that process that, again, will bring to us probably more than one idea that we can weigh in on, say, "We like this, we don't like that. There are aspects of this that don't." But what we'll have then are some cost estimates, too, to understand better what the impact overall and what the construction costs may be overall. That's all implicated with design aspects and what we do both underground, where we may not have a lot of variables, but also above ground, where we probably do have some variables that we can address. So it's a process. Again, it's a commitment to get the design done. It's a commitment to our community to do what's right and seek their input in the process. It's a commitment to do what's right by downtown property owners and those who lease buildings downtown and run their businesses from there. It's a commitment to all of us to do and work collectively to do what's right for a project that we knows needed, certainly on the utility side, and only makes sense to try to address on the streetscape side if we're going to do the utility work. So that's what your handout basically entails. I would also tell you that the design process will ultimately get to levels of finalization if we move forward, where we will get design documents done, so that we'll have the documents that we need in '26 to go out to bid and actually award a contract and begin shovels in the ground. But that's, again, not until '26, if we move forward with the design and engineering at this point in time.
With a design moving forward like that, if that all comes to fruition, then, at that point, you're far enough along to where in state or whatever, federal budget for 2026, you're far, you have enough documentation to apply for grant work?
It doesn't.
So by doing that and having that prepped all next year, we would be able to go after grant work in 2026 for the actual construction?
It helps us. It certainly improves an application. It doesn't necessarily be the only factor, but it certainly helps.
Basically, the process you just described is what I'm asking for in the Brickyard. Basically, the same thing?
And in order to do that, we need some expenditure and some appropriation of dollars.
You need design money.
That's right.
That's what you need.
That's right.
Design money.
That's right. And so, you know, again, you could take 15% of 12 million, if you're willing to go that route, to get a full design at the Brickyard. Here, you know, we have, we have the costs, as we estimate it, for just design of the downtown in the budget. Design and engineering. And again, that's a collaborative process. That's all of the things that we have heard loud and clear about getting input, understanding what we need, setting priorities, and then handing that off, once agreed to, to the right firms to get the design.
Mr. Hiscock, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
What's the breakdown, the difference between the cost of just the design and just the engineering? Do you have those numbers?
Are you asking me that, Mr. Wais?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for interrupting. Nope, no, that's fine. I'm sorry. So in terms of the downtown project, again, this is estimates. As Mr. Copley, we just have estimates at this point, but we use our engineers to help us gain these estimates. So in terms of the downtown improvement project, we have 3.1 million in design and engineering costs in the '25 budget. We anticipate that the downtown improvement project, from a construction standpoint, would be about 16.7. would be about 16.7. 16.7 million.
Actually, the question I have is, out of that 3.1, how much of that is engineering? And how much is design?
Uh, well, that, that's a, that's a good question, and I don't know that I have the answer to it. We, we lumped those costs together in that process. And again, I think the majority of the design and engineering work that needs to happen in this particular project is underground. It really is. It's infrastructure-related based design.
And I'll be the first to admit, the infrastructure needs to be addressed.
Yep.
There's no ifs, ands, and buts about that. But the streetscape, here we go again. Let's wait till we see what we're doing with the infrastructure, how things have to be changed before we even talk about a streetscape, design. Or rerouting of roads, or, you know.
My input on this, there are wants and there are needs.
Yes.
The infrastructure is definitely a need.
It's a need.
It is. The streetscape is a want. It is kind of a need, but it's not as strong of a need as the infrastructure. So, we definitely need the infrastructure. That's where I'm at on that whole thing.
And we would have to have a rough idea of the, of the streetscape. In the last plan, when it was, you know, there was talk of moving the gazebo or this or that, you'd have to have somewhat of a general idea whether you are gonna do that or not, so you know where to put the infrastructure.
And that is true. There are.
For, you know, College and Main and, and High, you wouldn't necessarily need that, but at least over there, you're gonna need to know that you're not, you're gonna have to have some idea roughly what you're gonna do over there, because you don't know where to put the infrastructure.
There's a seat over there.
Okay. Any other comments from council members? Yes, Mr. Parrish?
I always talk about infrastructure and safety forces, and the infrastructure's very important. But I think doing the infrastructure without the streetscape, because you've torn it up already, and without that is, is a waste of money. But my concern right now is, we spent X amount of dollars, I'd like to know how much on the last study for the streetscape, how much we spent, and then we found that lacking. And how we, you know, you gave an outline of how that would improve and how would you go about it, but what have we, and the second question is, what have we learned and how can we improve that situation so we don't have lacking streetscape possibilities? Because, I mean, like, taking out lack of parking, the gazebo shit situation, some of those things were probably non-negotiables for many people, and we, they were included in all, all the, all the different phases. So, hopefully, you can answer those several questions.
Well, I can't tell you, as I sit here, what the cost of that process was, but we can get that for you. We can, we can find out what that is. I think those are lessons, I will tell you, those are lessons learned from me as, as I somewhat stood on the sidelines during those processes. We will try to avoid that. The reality is, in a collaborative environment, there's going to be difference of opinions as to what priorities are or not. So, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, council, that we aren't gonna disagree as to what to do with something. But what we won't do, what we're committed to do, what the mayor and I are committed to do, is not let this project die on the vine, because we can't come to consensus on an aspect of the design. We want to keep the process moving. We will engage our consultant to keep the process moving, and we'll get this to a final design phase, hopefully, by the end of the year, where we're working on construction documents, so that we can then begin the discussion as to how and when do we fund the construction aspects of the project in the following year. That would be my hope.
I hear you loud and clearly. But we want an efficient government, and we've already spent money once. And so, I'd like some reassurance about how we're gonna go about that process, even though you brought it up and you gave us a diagram. But, so we can have non-negotiables. I mean, majority of people say this is a non-negotiable, that we have to have this in. And all I'm asking for is a majority. So, I don't know how we, that's the concern I have. I don't wanna spend money again after we've already spent money. And you did, I heard, heard your answer, but I don't know how I can get that reassurance.
And I don't know how I can give you that reassurance today, other than what I said, other than I will tell you, it's a process that you enter into. So, so, you know, how many people participate in that process? It all depends on how you define the majority or not. And again, just because a majority feels that we should paint all the asphalt white in the downtown, doesn't mean we're gonna do that. I mean, you're gonna get strong objection from folks not to do that, kind of thing. So, I can't sit here and tell you that we're gonna reach a, a agreement on all items and all terms that are gonna fit everyone's needs. But what I can tell you is, we'll have a collaborative process, we'll engage with stakeholders, we'll, we'll listen to what stakeholders have to say, and we won't get hung up with one aspect, or one feature, or one item. We'll continue to move the process through, because the utility portion is way too important to delay anymore. The streetscape portion makes sense, but there's abilities to listen and understand what works. I do believe that Mr. Stugmeyer made a good point. I don't think we can make all the infrastructure underground decisions without an understanding of what's happening above-ground at certain aspects, whether it be simply placing manholes, or, or whether it be putting traffic signal poles in the ground. We need to understand what we're doing with the streetscapes before we finalize just the utility portion. So, there is some crossover there. I will, I will and want to make sure I make that statement to council.
I guess what would solve this, or give me more reassurance, is, are we gonna make the people come to us? Or are we gonna walk out in the community and talk to them individually and invite them to meetings and so forth? If we make them come to us, we're not gonna get as good a response. And like, I went out and talked to all the building owners, almost all, and the merchants about what they thought. And that really enlightened me and changed what my thought process was on this. So, I'm hoping that, but I've asked all of them to come, and we had one video sent to us to saying they supported it, and that was it. So, I'm hoping that we go to them and not just ask them to come to us, because we're the, the city.
Mr. Parrish, we can make every effort to make sure that it's an inclusive collaborative process, where we not just post notices and hope to see who comes. We'll, we'll make every effort to, to get there and do that. We've, we've done it in other projects, where we've walked and opened doors and knocked on doors and done things we needed to do to get people here. We can certainly make that a priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurcek, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, just, you know, I am definitely 100% for approving the budget to do the design and engineering on this, and I guess the, what I would call attention to, and the reason why I have confidence, is this is what needs to be done to make sure we know how to move this project forward. And this administration has delivered on the destination playground, the fire station, so there's nothing that I've seen sitting here today that leads me to believe that this project would be any different. So, that's my two cents on that.
Thanks for the comment. Anything else from council members? Now it's time to, you know, ask questions, speak up, give opinions. Okay. I think we've heard from everybody. Now, let's go back to, well, you looked like you had something to say, Mr.?
Well, Mr. Williams, I have several other budget concerns that were raised by both Mr. Copley and Mr. Parrish. I'd be happy to address those, or if you feel.
No, no, we're good for time.
Okay. So, so I'm, I'm moving away from, from the two projects that were in. Mr. Copley raised a concern about the proposal for the replacement of a fire department tanker that was in the fire department's budget. He made some good references to costs and some of the things that were there. I just wanted to report that after discussions with Chief Linder, I have reduced that budget amount to 800,000. That 800,000 includes not just the purchase of the vehicle, but also the upfitting from our provider of upfitting, as well as some additional equipment. So, that adjustment has been, has been made.
What was it before?
I believe that they had $1 million in, in the budget, and it's been reduced to 800,000. And again, I think that's, number is probably conservatively high in terms of what the actual spend will be, but based upon the discussions with Chief Linder, he is my fire chief, he is all of our fire chiefs right now, it was his professional opinion that we keep it at that amount if we're gonna make any reduction. Then, I don't know if there are any questions.
Any comments from council?
That truck should cost between 500 and 600,000 dollars from the departments that I've spoken with. So, what's the extra equipment and stuff, what's the extra 300,000 dollars that you're asking for?
Well, I think I would, I would make reference to an apparatus replacement schedule that you prepared, Mr. Copley, when you were doing?
Yes.
And your estimate for that truck was 951,000 dollars at the time of that replacement.
Those are all estimates.
I'm sorry?
That, that schedule was done, it was all estimates.
Yeah. And, and so, we're using, based upon the truck committee's analysis and the work they've done, their estimate as to cost, they've talked to several different providers and those things, they've actually moved off of a custom truck to more of a standardized truck, which would be part of it.
Conventional chassis.
Yep, yep. And, and then also.
Have you received quotes for?
I have not personally seen any quotes for that. I believe they have.
Could you please receive some quotes?
I believe they have sought some quotes, yep.
Could you pass those on?
Sure, sure. We could do that, yep. And then, the upfitting is a company that we've used for years, Sensible Products, that does all of our upfitting. They're not the cheapest outfitters in town, but they do quality work, and, and we rely upon them, so there's a level of trust with them. And then, the specific equipment on the tanker that's being replaced, I don't know that as I sit here, but I do have a listing of that information.
I'd like to see that.
So, I can get, I can, I can provide that, too.
Thank you.
Yep, definitely. The next item, unless there are any other questions?
Yeah, any other members?
The next item that was mentioned in the discussion was a use of that funding that it was dedicated towards the tanker, maybe being directed towards our existing radio system and some of the concerns on the radio system. I would tell the, the council that we're already been working on addressing the radio system issues. We've actually partnered with Marx, which is the state radio system that we now use. And based upon our urging, they have met with First Energy, and we are very close to actually getting our antennas up on, our equipment, excuse me, on the antennas up at the Star substation out on Silver Creek Road. First Energy is also a Marx user, so they have a, a benefit and a, and a need to do this. It has just been a very time-consuming process to go through the corporate ladder to understand both their legal concerns, as well as, First Energy is no friend of Wadsworth necessarily, but we do work together on occasions. However, it takes a lot of doors opened and a lot of people within the organization to get consensus to, to work with us and to move forward with us. The reason I mention that is, if we were going to do this project alone, this would be another one of these three to four million dollar propositions that I would be presenting to council. I think this is gonna happen, and that, what that means is, we are going to get more reliable communication services on the state's dime. Three to four million dollar investment in, in that particular facility for the benefit of first and foremost, Wadsworth first responders. Secondarily, First Energy's own uses of the Mark system, and then, the Mark systems themselves has a, have a desire to add a tower in this location. So, we have leveraged our need and our shortfall in our, to the tune of about three to four million dollars, that someone else is going to pay to improve our services. So, I, I think it's been a good trade-off in, in our work there. And it's taken us a long time to get where, admittedly, longer than I would have liked to see, but we're working on that. More of a low, lower level item, I think, Mr. Copley mentioned that there was some concern about storage-related costs, in particular, 1,200 dollars that was, that was put in there. I have removed that to zero. I will tell you that already, the, the fire department uses old Station One for storage, there's still stuff over there in storage there. In addition, there's availability of storage at new, at the new fire station that we can use, so we've zeroed out that particular expenditure.
Thank you.
Yep. Another item that was mentioned as a budget concern included a lack of dedicated funding for what I would identify as NFPA standard physicals, if you will. I have a question, and then some responses for Mr. Copley. So, are you, are you talking about the functional testing that's required by NFPA 1582 standard, or the medical examination?
Medical examination.
Medical examination. Okay, I would tell you that.
Which we used to do, which, which we did when I was there.
Yep, yep.
And then it went away.
Yes. And so, we did it for a couple of years. I will tell you this, that we currently strongly encourage all firefighters, whether they be full-timers or part-timers, to get annual physicals. But we do that purposely through their primary care physician. The reason that is, we believe strongly that the, the medical care they receive and their diagnoses or lack thereof are private in nature and, and should be discussed with their primary care physician first and foremost. So, we do encourage folks to do that. We also strongly encourage, and we have pretty good participation levels, with firefighters participating in the city's wellness program, in particular, the biometric screenings that we do at the annual health fair. We have pretty good, pretty good compliance and cooperation with folks to take part of that. It is important to note that the city cannot force employees to do physicals, and they cannot force employees to submit to medical examinations. Not only employees who are governed by a contract, certainly our IFF members, we can't do that for part-timers either. I think it would be important for council to also understand that, in the past, the amount of voluntary participation in medical examinations has steadily decreased. And I think there's an obvious reason for that. Some of you probably know it, I don't need to say it. But the findings could result in negative employment impacts to those individuals. People don't like that. People usually want to continue working with us, they enjoy the work they do. I think that's contributed to their lack of voluntary participation in the process. Not something that makes me, the risk manager, feel warm and fuzzy, that folks are avoiding, but something that I know, we have less than the ability to mandate those things and have effectiveness. Despite those things, I will tell you, we had already begun a process of exploring participating in the new Cleveland Clinic First Responder Wellness Program. It has not fully been stood up yet, but we are an early applicant to participate in that process. So, I'm hopeful that we have some opportunity to turn the tide here in terms of physicals for our folks. In addition, we explored our common provider, Suma. Suma does not even offer firefighter-specific cancer screenings because of liability concerns. So, that's not an option for us. Despite that, we took, we took some information from our, from our colleagues up north of us, and we are actively also exploring the Grail and Galeri multi-cancer early diagnostic testing, although it's extremely expensive, almost to the tune of about 40,000 dollars of investment for every member in our department to do that. We're not even certain if it's available to us at this point. But we, those are two, those are three items that we already explored on this particular area. So, I would say noted, understood. We have some limitations, and we are looking into possible alternatives in those particular areas.
Well, if I could tell you why that's on there, the full-time people, the city provides insurance as a benefit.
Yep.
The part-time people don't have that benefit. They have, they have to, that money has to come out of their pocket for their co-pays if they do the physical, or their insurance company has to cover it, if they cover it.
Right.
That's why that's on. I mean, we can do it for the full-time people, why can't we do it for the part-time people?
Well, we can't do it for either, actually. So, so, so that's it. But, full-timers, obviously, based upon whether it's their own insurance, our insurance, there's a, there's a copay there, just as many of our part-timers have insurance through their full-time positions, they, they, they can do it through those processes, too. And we encourage them to do those kind of things. I think there were a couple of other items that came in after those initial concerns on the budget, and this was an item, I think, also that Mr. Rosberg raised at, at Public Service or Ways when we discussed the cemetery budget. And that was a request to increase the indigent burial, the amount of money budgeted for indigent burials. So, we, I, I wanted to make sure I told council why we picked that number and why we came up with that number. We looked at the last five years of indigent burial costs that the city had. In the past five years, we've had 20 indigent burials, which the city was responsible to pay. 18 were done by Hilliard-Rosberg Funeral Home, two by Cox Funeral Homes. So, we had an average of about four a year, at about 1,500 bucks, that's 6,000 dollars, that's what we have in the budget. That's how we came up with that budget number. Another item that was mentioned.
Any comment? Would you stop? Any other comment about that? Because I have one.
Would, for two years, the city did get reimbursed from the state of Ohio for those. So, I don't know if that number is factored into there, but I can assure you, I know I, I've done more than, on average, four a year out of my facility. But again, I just, I, I found it interesting that that fund goes through the cemetery, because the cemetery funds nothing toward indigent burials.
That's right.
So, I didn't understand why it was even in the cemetery budget, because the Ohio revised code says it should be in the general budget of every municipality or, or government entity. So, I, again, when I saw it in the cemetery budget, I'm like, we don't, we don't get a free, they don't get a free grave, I'd make sure that something else occurs. So, I, I didn't understand why it was even in there.
Maybe I can clarify that. So, even. Maybe I can clarify that, so even though it's listed in the cemetery budget, that's within our general budget, it's just classified in terms of cemetery costs. So, we have some items in that budget that go off to and leave the city to the cemetery board, but that's a particular item that stays in the city's general budget, it's classified because, I think of the nature of the work, it's placed in the cemetery, in the cemetery budget, that, that's all it was. You are correct, from June of twenty-two to April of twenty-three, the state offered reimbursements to, to the state, and the city did receive about ten thousand dollars in reimbursements for those costs through that period of time, but those are still the burials that, that we had on record, the indigent burials of city individuals that we were responsible for, so about twenty in the five years that we had.
So, if I may make a comment, if it's my turn, this is the same thing that the county's going through right now, and they're in discussions, the rate of indigent burial, burials is way up, and they're trying to figure out a process to deal with it, because, again, it was at a certain level, and it just almost spiked, so...
And again, I'm, I'm just providing the information as to why we put that number in there, that I wanted to be responsive to you as to why, why that came up.
Well, can we reconcile that? I mean, I guess if the number's low, it's low, and let's move it up, but if, I guess if that's the data that we're working off of...
I can try to go through my rec, I can try and go through my records and see how many I've actually built out over the last few years.
What's the issue with raising the number up to cover, because if it's, money's not used, it can come back.
Yeah.
It's not like it has to be spent.
No, and there are other funds within the cemetery fund that, that we could use already, that's in the appropriated budget, so if you, if you spent seventy-five hundred on, on that, and it was six thousand a budget, we go to the second, the second fund and pay for that, out of that, so...
But when you take money out of that second fund, what are you cutting short? That's, that's, that's the point of my question.
It's usually a miscellaneous account within the cemetery fund, so it's kind of budgeted there for other contractual elements that we might come up with, so we would take from there to do that. You can put more money in, in that budget line, it's just, again, these are areas of general fund concern, we try to keep costs based upon data, and that's why the number was in there. Then, I think the last item, or, no, there's one more item after this, there was a question about the Trolley Park House and, and the maintenance and janitorial costs, excuse me, associated with the house, and, and why aren't we looking to increase rates, rental rates out there? So, just a couple of background information for you, the rental price is a hundred and fifty dollars, we do charge ten dollars for Wadsworth nonprofit-related entities who rent the facility. I would tell you, there's been an explosion in the popularity of the Trolley Line House in form of reservations, in twenty-one, in twenty-two, we had twenty-one reservations, in twenty-four, at the time of my notes, which was December second in preparation of our meeting, we had forty-five reservations already this, this year, and we have six reservations as of that point in time for twenty-five already, so it's pretty popular. I think part of its popularity is probably based on its affordability, if you will, in terms of one fifty, and by and large, although there are renters that are not Wadsworth residents, for the most part, it's Wadsworth residents that are using this particular facility. So, essentially, that means over the last three years, we've received a little over thirteen thousand dollars in rental revenue, by far, the most rental revenues we see coming into the city in, in any park-related environment. The overarching issue too is, how much do you charge the public to enjoy our parks? There's got to be a level of restraint that we all use to determine what is the value we're, we're preparing and providing to our constituents versus when do we look to recover costs and those types of things. As I mentioned in the public service discussion, or public ways discussion, I apologize, we did put in the budget this year for a maintenance or janitorial position, so we, we are thoroughly underwhelmed by the, by the value we receive in folks, most recently doing some of that work, and we are shocked by the exponential cost increases that we get for janitorial services. So, it made sense, we finally surpassed the break-even point where if we brought in our own janitor, we'd actually save money on some of this. So, the hope would be that that person could not only do this facility, but other city facilities if needed, including the Trolley Line House to do some of the cleaning, so that doesn't mean that we should abdicate charging rental fees, I'm not saying that at all, but we're hope that we'll see some more normalcy in terms of cost and benefit analysis on some of the revenue items there.
There may be a question for a different time for kind of constraints, but just, the, the rental out there, you mentioned citizens and non-citizens, so, so in other words, there are, there are people that can rent that facility that are not residents of Wadsworth, and do they, then they pay the same thing that residents do? Just as a question, okay?
I believe so, yep, yep. And, and again, that's an excellent endpoint, there's nothing that stops us from continuing this discussion and changing that rental fee as we move forward in twenty-five. I think this was, Mr. Copley, I don't mean to attribute this to you if it wasn't you, but, but I think the final question you had was about the airport, specifically, and it was a question, yeah, it was a question about, did the city have available any snowplow equipment, and/or could we propose providing any snowplow equipment for a recently purchased pickup truck that the FO, FOP, or, excuse me, FOP, FOB did, FBO did out at the airport? And I would tell you that in a discussion with our maintenance department, we would not recommend that vehicle for plowing, nor do we have any snowplow assembly equipment available for that particular vehicle. I would note for council is that we have a rather large proposed expenditure that will benefit the airport in this particular regard, we have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of, of city funds dedicated for the purchase of a snowplow vehicle or removal equipment out at the airport in the twenty-five budget already. In addition, they do have a fully functioning old street department five-ton dump truck, which they use, which has a snowplow package, which we have provided to them, and they use that, I would think, as their primary means of snowplow removal equipment out at the airport. So, there are those items to, to hopefully help those folks address that concern. Don't know if there are any questions?
You skipped over the fire alarm for Station Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Fire Department, Station Two, so, the question there was, why are we going outside for monitoring of fire alarm systems when we have this rather robust fiber network in the city? We should have our own dispatch center do that. We did explore that, but unfortunately, it's not just a question of a robust fiber optic system to help us, we have some legacy equipment in terms of the panels for the fire alarm systems, and our providers have indicated to us that they're not certain that they could make it work to, to run it to our dispatch center to do that. Currently, our dispatch center does not monitor any systems right now, not this building, this building goes to an alarm company for monitoring, we would be proposing that the same system go to the same entity to do that monitoring. They said it would be extremely costly to go to a new panel and change out that potential if we wanted to use our dispatch center to do that, so we have not fully explored the cost of that change-out and what that would be, and we did not propose that in the current budget. Yes, Mr. Parrish?
I have one other item on my list, if this is the city...
I have a couple of items on your list.
City Hall parking lot, yes.
Yep.
If you've gotten to them.
I was about to get to that, if there are no questions on Mr. Parrish, so, I think we've covered a couple of areas of mutual concern, Mr. Parrish, if I missed something or skipped something and it wasn't addressed, please, please stop me and I will try to address it. So, in, in the area of parks, I think Mr. Parrish talked about the trailhouse concerns, we've addressed that, but there was also a concern about the parking lot conditions in parks, as they currently exist, what is the maintenance plan and what are the capital budget plans for those particular areas? I know we're short on time, or we've gone long, so, yeah, so, so, I won't ask you for specific concerns, because I think you've relayed some of those current concerns to Mr. Belloc now, at this point in time, and I will tell you, as I've told others in the public ways meeting, we have dedicated a tremendous amount of funding in the Parks Department, more so than we have in many recent years, to allow those folks to be more diligent and more responsive to maintenance-related needs, and my hope is that they will use that funding not only for supplies and materials to make those maintenance-related and capital upgrades, but also in equipment that they can do that more often, if you will, with that. All of our department heads have an area for maintenance within their budgets, and they are tasked with making sure that the areas in which they are responsible or operate in or serve have regular and updated maintenance that they do, and certainly, as you all know, we've started a more intensive capital improvement project planning, so I think as we build that over years, we'll see many more of these parking lot-related expenses incorporated into those large capital budget planning documents.
I, I talked to Mr. Belloc, and the actual maintenance ideas, I think we agreed about how that would go about and so forth, he explained those things, but the capital issues is what I brought up, there are three, three of the parks are extremely bad shape, the parking lots, and that kind of relates to the other question I had about the city, so I'll let you go to that, because I'm worried about, yes?
Yeah, I will, I will skip to the City Hall parking lot, which is a proposed project within the twenty-five budget, so I think, to summarize, not, not using Mr. Parrish's comments specifically, but basically, there is a concern with other parking lots being in worse condition than our City Hall Eastern parking lot, and I would tell you again, offline, I'd love to, to talk to you a little bit more about what's your perception and conditions of what particular parking lots are in rough shape, but I will tell you, this City Hall parking lot is in terrible shape, and it's been in the budget for a couple of years and has been axed from the budget during these processes. Again, I think there's a commitment that we need to make to our own employees, as well as an opportunity with this particular parking lot. This parking lot has what, what is referred to as not only a subsurface base condition, but it doesn't take anything more than an observation to see that it's well past its durability. In addition, we have an opportunity to expand it, the parking lot is not rightly sized already, if you park a, a large truck or a pickup truck in that lot, good luck trying to get out of it if there's any cars parked behind you, it's very difficult, it just was not laid out correctly, there's not enough space for it. But the asphalt itself has all of the hallmarks of a deteriorating asphalt surface, things that are commonly referred to as alligator cracks, it has long longitudinal cracks, it has water infiltration-related depressions, it has potholes, it's just in really bad shape. The actual surface is no longer an asphalt surface, it's basically stoned in certain areas because it's lost all of its asphalt material-like consistency, it is, it's in really bad shape. We removed a house when we acquired a piece of property, you know, at the end of Maple and North Lyman, that whole area can be included in a redesign of the particular parking area. So, I would tell you, submitting it, quite honestly, it's in bad shape, it's in terrible shape. I think we've already talked about some of the security aspects that are needed for our police department, I think we house not only police vehicles there, but personally-owned vehicles in that particular lot, it is not a safe situation. Without bringing up tragedies, we've had a shooting in that particular parking lot, we've had situations which don't meet best practices for the safeguarding of public safety-related employees and their personally-owned vehicles, as well as their work-related vehicles. Lastly, I would tell you, it is not ideal that we allow the public to circumvent this building, so I think there's an opportunity with that additional parking area to maybe move some of the mailboxes that are on the north side of this building out to North Lyman Street, I think it would be a smoother and better proposition to have that. We have court staff that park on the north side of the building, again, a group of employees that need and deserve to be protected when they to, come to and from their workplace and to their privately-owned vehicles, and lastly, I know that the Johnson House would love to have additional opportunities at, at parking. All of that would be encompassed in a redesign and reworking of the City Hall East parking lot, and that is what's proposed in the twenty-five budget.
I'm just going to say, I respectfully disagree about, that's all.
I think, Mr. Parrish, you had all, you'd mentioned downtown improvements, I think we handled some of those items already, yellow curbs were, I think, thoroughly discussed at another meeting, I'm happy to, to, to give you more on that if you'd like.
Mr. Belloc, second, you have further to explain that.
Sure thing, and then the last item was, I think, an item that was also mentioned in another meeting about airport and taking control of some of the revenue concerns that we jointly have with hangars and those types of things out there.
We took care of that last meeting.
That is a litigation item that is currently underway and moving forward, so. I think that's everything that I was made aware of, I'm certainly available to answer any budget questions.
Okay, let's just, for a last call, Councilmember Stugmeyer, do you have anything further, any questions? Councilmember Hanlon?
No, my major concern with the budget has been answered by Ms. Fix, I tend to take a big-picture view of things, and I was most concerned about our ability to service debt.
Well, we're going to go into that after we're done with this discussion, she's had a little more presentation.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'm good.
You're good?
I reserve my right to go last.
Okay.
Okay.
You're good? You're good? Your last?
Yes, I want to make a motion, I want to move to divide the question of the following of the budget, the twenty-four, one-eight-one, I want to separate out the, the Brickyard as a separate vote, and I would like the parking lot set, set out as a separate vote, okay?
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Can I add to that?
You could amend that motion.
I'd like to amend his motion to include the proposed tanker for the Fire Department, and I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
No.
Parrish?
Yes, I mean, I mean, yes, I want the motion.
Stugmeyer?
No.
Rosberg?
Yes.
You're a check?
No.
And I'm a yes.
Three. Three yes.
Go ahead, break the tie, I'm a yes.
Three yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, before we go on, can we have a little bit more clarification, it sounds as if you were removing, as far as the Brickyard is concerned, but I think before, when there was a discussion was had, there was discussion as far as alternate this, alternate that, let's discuss, do the design, you know, I would, if we could have some direction as far as, you know, what is wanted to be put in the budget, or, or, obviously, not the whole thing is, is wanted, but...
I honestly thought you was going to come here tonight with some of the input that you got last Tuesday night and present something different to us, that's the reason for me supporting this motion, okay? Nothing has changed, we've had discussions in committee, we've had discussions in council meetings, and nothing has changed from the administration, okay? I thought you got a clear message that there had to be some changes made here, because I mentioned it six weeks ago, that there's millions of dollars that need to be reevaluated, okay?
I think the main thing is, is that there were some various alternatives that were provided.
But it's the same alternatives that was provided the last week that didn't fly last week, so why do you think they was going to fly this week?
I can speak to that, I did not get that clear indication last week that those alternatives were not feasible or even worthy of continued discussion.
Well, you even said, I see some shaking heads up there, you know, when, when I presented, you know, my thing on doing the design, you even mentioned that during the meeting, and I thought, well, he's going to come back with a design price, you know, tonight, but nothing changed.
Right, we...
It's the same number.
We can't give you a design price until we go out to design it.
Fifteen percent, that's the design price.
We can use that standard, sure.
Yeah, that's what you use in every project. That's what you use in every project.
So, with that motion passing, Assistant Law Director, where does that stand on our current...
24-181?
Yeah, 24-181.
Well, that motion passing, the way I understood, the motion was phrased would be that those specific items, the Brickyard, the parking lot redesign, and the tanker would be removed.
Excluded from that budget.
A separate vote?
Yeah.
Is that what we are to understand?
Point, point, point of order on this. Explain why it's not a clear division, it means that we're going to vote on those separately. They're excluded from this, but they're going to be brought up separately.
Yes, correct. I believe they'd be then subject to a separate vote after further discussion.
For those three items?
Yeah, they're just removed from this reservation now.
Okay, so how would I proceed with that? As far as the legislation, 24-181?
So you're asking for an amended appropriation ordinance, is that correct?
That's what I like.
Yeah, that's what I needed to know.
So, yes, we would need time to prepare that, because there's revenue and expenses that have to come, be removed from the bigger picture. So could we bring that to the next meeting?
I'm fine with that as council president.
I have a question. So if that comes to the next meeting, and that has to have three readings...
It doesn't have to...
It doesn't have to have three readings?
But we should. I want this to have three readings.
But the budget does.
Pardon me?
I want this to have three readings.
This is the budget. 181 is the budget.
I know that. But if we're going to have another, we're going to have another one that's going to be new. So we have one that's on first reading tonight, so we have to have two more meetings before the end of the year to get that done.
That's correct.
So if we have a new one come at our next meeting, we have to have two more meetings after that. So that's a total of four more meetings before the end of the year.
Actually, can this be amended?
This ordinance could be amended to remove those three items. And then I, assuming you want three separate ordinances for each of those?
Why would we amend this ordinance tonight if we're going to have to read the other three ordinances? We pulled out three times. We might as well just read them all at the same time.
We can't amend the ordinance tonight. That would be too complex.
But if we're going to pull those three items, and we're, those are going to need three readings, we're already on first reading of the regulars.
That could move forward.
So we can do it all at the next meeting. We don't even need to read it.
Just have a new ordinance.
Yes.
So we have to have three more meetings to...
Yes, we will.
...approve a budget between now and the end of the year.
And there's a time constraint. We need to have it, I don't know, Ms. Fix, can you clarify that? It was, it did have to be the county on the, by noon of the 17th, which is our next scheduled meeting. So we'll need to schedule...
Normally, we aren't this late in the process where we're adopting the budget, but we have to send the certificate of resources to the county for 2025, and the county's deadline is noon on the 17th, which is next Tuesday. So it'd be that, I propose that I will ask them if they're, they don't meet until Friday, so I was going to ask one of the assistant auditors there if we could get it to them on the 18th at noon, because we'll need time after the budget's adopted to update the certificate to get that to them. So there is a bit of a timing issue. If we don't do that, there's a chance that we could be considered out of compliance when we're audited, so...
So my proposal is to meet again. I can't do it tomorrow because of the 24-hour rule, but to meet again on Thursday and then set the other two meetings after that. And we're flexible on time.
So can I make a comment? I do think we owe it to the administration if we're going to pull those three items to give them some direction that we're expecting them to come back with on the ordinance. So I think we can read the room. I guess on the Brickyard, I would recommend seeing something that just talks strictly design fee-related. That's an option that we're going to need to have to try to push that or move it in some sort of direction. And then I would ask Mr. Copley and then Mr. Parrish to give that, to give you an idea of what they want to see on the tanker issue, and also what their overall feeling is on the parking lot, so we can all hear what they would like to see.
Exactly what I asked for, you know, 30 minutes ago. I asked for quotes, I asked for, you know, information about what that extra $200,000 was going to buy, and that kind of stuff. I mean, that's why I added the tanker on there. Instead of just giving them a blank check for $800,000, what's that $800,000 for?
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, is they come back at our next special meeting, and is there going to be information there? Are you asking to remove the two, like, the $800,000 is obviously, you feel too high.
Too high.
So are we, is there an opportunity to get that down to $600,000 by Thursday?
Get the information on it. We'll see what it is. I don't know if that's a consensus issue, or if that's three people's issue, or what. We'll provide whatever information we need to provide.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I don't want to offend anybody, but I probably will. I feel like we have lost our way a little bit in terms of the role of council, and we're getting to the point where we're not being able to get our job done. And we're going to, we're going to, we're putting a barrier to our staff to be able to get a job done, and I think it's a disservice to the public. We're really in the weeds.
Well, thank you for your comment. Remind everybody on council, you're elected by the citizens that represent them in the affairs of the city, and I think that's our number-one job. So thank you for your comment, but...
And all the items I put on that list that I sent to Mr. Hiscock, those all came from citizens. I'm representing the citizens. I'm not representing Ralph Gobbin.
I agree with Mr. Yurichak. You needed some direction. All I'm asking is that particular item, you have a separate ordinance for that funding of that, of those items, the parking lot and the Brickyard, the funding. Just, so it's a straight-up vote, yes or no, if we're going to accept it. And I agree with Mr. Yurichak again on the planning, or whatever, what was it called? The plan to, how to move forward, you know, of the park. I think, isn't that what you...
On the Brickyard?
Yeah, on the Brickyard.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure that whatever we're reading, or whatever numbers we're seeing come the next ordinance, is we have enough ability to make a decision on them. Because I still feel like we're going to come back in two days, and we're going to be in the same boat, because we're not going to know what we're voting on.
It was my intent, you know, providing it was legal, to vote on, you know, as proposed in the budget, and then Proposal 2 and Proposal 3. That's what I was going to do until we had this amendment, so...
I do believe that safety, when we talked about the parking lot, we recommended that it stay, we had our, we were satisfied. So I will tell you that when I voted to go along with Mr. Parrish on this, it was mainly the Brickyard was my hangup right now, because I'm just not sure where it's at. The tanker truck, I have to defer to Mr. Copley on safety. You know, I'm on safety too, but he knows trucks way better than I do. I don't know anything about fire trucks, and we've had that discussion, and it has come down to $200,000. The parking lot, I'm all about our safety forces, and that lot is a disaster. So I got no issue with that. I just hope they tie it into the storm sewer lines.
Okay. Any other comments? I've asked Ms. Fix to give us a little presentation on our cash reserve balance. Come, say, go ahead, Mary.
I just have one item. So we do have 2.5 million in one-time strategic dollars available to us. I mean, that should be appropriated in the budget for use in some form or fashion on the Brickyard. I don't know if that's something that you want to maintain and keep in the budget, or is that something you're asking to pull out and have a separate vote?
It should stay in the budget.
Can we use, let's say we take the one, what is it, the 15% number?
So you're talking $1.8 million for design fees based on the 12 million dollar overall project cost. Are we able to use $1.8 million of that 2.5 for that sole purpose?
Believe so.
Then I guess what I would like to see is that we appropriate $2.5 million to the Brickyard, so we can move forward with that part of it, and then everything else will be based on the supplementals. Because I think that's the only way we're going to get a consensus to move forward.
Well, Director, point of order, is this something we can vote on here? Or take it as basically like a straw poll?
Based on the last motion, I honestly don't know the answer to that right now.
If we could just get some indication, if that is what was just presented is, would be amenable, that's something that we could have in the budget, and that we can check off, that that's something that everybody is agreeing upon. What we're just trying to do is come to some sort of consensus, and it sounds like it's just down to a handful of things. But that would give us direction and be able to have that appropriately putting in the budget.
Thank you for that, and let's discuss that, the mayor's proposal.
I think the $2.5 million should be able to do the design. I would have no problem with that.
I'm in agreement with you on that, Mr. Copley.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes, that'd be fine. Mr. Yurichak had a good point.
Yeah, I'm fine with thinking that, enter for the design to move forward.
There's your answer. Okay. Anything else from administration? Ms. Fix.
Well, the only change that I'm aware of, and I'll see if Mr. Hiscock agrees, is that we won't be spending $3 million out of the general fund cash reserve, unless the tanker truck or... I don't have the net impact of all these other changes. We will have that for the final appropriations ordinance, but I would say that in '25, we were, the proposed budget showed cash dropping to around $10.8 million. That should go up $3 million to almost $14 million. And I don't know if those monies are going to be spent in the future, but basically, we've reduced the cash draw on the general fund by $3 million through these discussions.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, comments from council? Anything further from administration? It's all the entertaining motion to adjourn.
To move.
We adjourn. Will the special meeting of Wadsworth City Council for Tuesday, December 10th, at 2024, please come to order. Will you please rise and pledge allegiance to the...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my mission and my power, the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Rossbert?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
And Yurichak?
Here.
Will the clerk please read the legislation?
We're going to start with first readings tonight. We have Resolution Number 24-16 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rossbert and discussed at committee of the whole. A resolution requesting advance payments of money that may be in the Medina County Treasury to the count of the City of Wadsworth as provided for in Section 321.34 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place Resolution Number 24-16 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution Number 24-16 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance Number 24-182 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer discussed at special committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $530,000 in the 608 Electric Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President, I make a motion to place ordinance Number 24-182 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 24-182 has been placed on second reading.
And we'll move to one more. Ordinance Number 24-181 sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Wadsworth during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, establishing a new system of funds and accounts and declaring emergency.
Council, our clerk, council on pulling that legislation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Order Number 24-178 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rossbert and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to enter into an agreement with the County of Medina, Ohio, to provide the services of the county building department to the City of Wadsworth for all residential, non-residential, and commercial structures and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three-reading rule on ordinance Number 24-178.
Second.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Hines? Oops, sorry. Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance Number 24-178.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Rossbert's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance Number 24-178?
Copley?
Yes.
Hines, oh, sorry. Yurichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 24-178 has been adopted.
Ordinance Number 24-179 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance amending ordinance 98-48 to increase the threshold of tax exemption before requiring a revenue-sharing agreement with the Wadsworth City Schools and the City of Wadsworth Community Reinvestment Area Program as defined in the ordinance 98-48 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three-reading rule on ordinance Number 24-179.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.[1757.75]
Our last one is ordinance Number 24-175 on third reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend Section 35.31 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wadsworth to increase the compensation of the president of council, council members, clerk of city council, beginning in calendar year 2026 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance Number 24-175 on fourth reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance Number 24-175 has been placed on fourth reading. Any other business from administration?
Mr. Williams, I would just ask for the council's reconsideration on ordinance 24-181, the budget ordinance. I would just ask you this. I'm not sure what pulling the ordinance from your consideration tonight actually does for the ordinance. If you read it second, you're not adopting any terms of it. I think we've got clear direction to make some changes, and it just keeps that budget ordinance with hundreds of lines of non-disputed budget-related items. It keeps it moving in a process where we may not face some timeline-related issues later.
Are we even able to read it having pulled items from it? That's why I was confused.
Yeah, that was my question back to you.
You pulled items from an ordinance, so it's not even, you'd have to amend it in order to read it, right?
And that was the question I asked. Could this be amended? I asked the auditor, so.
We've all, there have been other changes already made, so you're reading it per the budget book is what it is right now. As long as you don't adopt it, I don't think there's a problem. I don't know about the legal issue, but it's pretty normal to amend it.
So point of order to the Assistant Law Director? Is that something we can do a first reading now since I pulled it?
I believe the council's inclined to do that, so we can make a motion to reconsider 181 as it's presented, and then, as has been discussed, you're not adopting that if you move it then on to third reading and then.
Move it on to the next reading?
If there's a meeting on Thursday, those changes can be, those issues can be presented, those numbers can be presented.
And that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, you can do that.
And I would just give the council an example if you're having any concern about that. Listen, we've read ordinances, budget ordinances before, one reading, two readings, but it changes in that third reading or the adoption phase because we adopt all of the changes at that point in time. All I'm asking is your reconsideration of perhaps reading it the second time, moving it the second, and continuing that process like we've done in other years.
Can you handwrite something real quick so I can give it to a council member to?
Okay, and I just make a motion to reconsider reading ordinance Number. Mr. President, I move to make an ordinance to reconsider reading ordinance Number 24-181.
Roll call.
Second.
Sorry. Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
No.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Who did I give? Mr. Yurichak, do you want to read that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, we'll read ordinance Number 24-181 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak. An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Wadsworth during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, establishing a new system of funds and accounts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance Number 24-181 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?